All right, all right. Public comment on agenda items before we get to the public hearing. Yes.
Greg Roby, Meryl Straynes. I would like to make a general comment relative to the agenda, which is I think we need to proceed with local law to appoint a town attorney. I do not think we are being served well by having a contract firm assigned as an attorney. It creates things such as what's on the agenda, which is executive session is announced sometime this afternoon. Special meeting that is not on the calendar, but is on, was on the published agenda. But if you just look at the calendar, it's a workshop. And that you have things like what happened at the planning board meeting this week, where a question was asked, that should be got an opinion from the attorney, that a public hearing 20 years ago would justify the planning board not having a public hearing on an application. It is the ability of the town people to be involved in their governance that makes us a vital community. And it is the inability of us to be properly informed that extends the honor culture that we inherited from colonial ours. Those with the power have the power. And those who serve, serve persons with the power. I think we can do better. And I think a good place to start is having a lawyer who's a town officer. And this requires a local law. And the state law allows for this. And so I would encourage you, while the RFP is being extended tonight as an agenda item, that you look into possibility of creating a town prosecutor's attorney. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Is there any further public comment before we get to the public hearing? No? Okay. All right, opening up the public hearing on the FY 2026 preliminary budget. Just want to keep in mind, we do have a three-minute rule in place, and the clerk will be taking that into account.
Oh, okay, we're gonna do that.
Yes, we are. So is there any public comment on the FY 2026 preliminary budget?
Nancy Ryan, a couple of things. I emailed you, Josh, and the board on Tuesday morning. I never got a response. At the last meeting, you were very clear, and it had to do with budget questions. At the last meeting, you were very clear publicly that you are here for all of us, and you will answer our questions, our emails, our phone calls. I followed up with a call to your office today. I was told that you were in and out, but when you came back in, she would let you know, and never heard back from you. Go back to my email from a couple of weeks ago. I emailed the same email three times, and never did you answer any of my questions nor respond to my email. Yes, this has to do with the budget, because they were all budget questions. So if you're gonna pick and choose who you answer questions to in the public, you should remember that you work for all of us, not just those that you like, okay? Regarding the budget, my questions this time were what falls under the supervisor's salary line? We all know that it's not $298,000 for you. But what's the breakdown of that? That was my one question I wanted to know. The question that I've asked twice is where is the bookkeeper's salary in the budget? And now I will ask you, what is that?
So that is in the reorg meeting. It comes out every year. And as you know, employees are getting a 5.5 contractual rate. So you just take the reorg meeting, that's a public document from last year, apply that rate to it.
And is there a reason why you can't specifically, as the budget officer, answer that question? I have a problem with that, okay? We're gonna avoid that question for I don't know why. Also, I want to point out that you, as supervisor, are making in excess of $82,000 for the coming year. Yes, that's published. You're probably the highest-paid supervisor in the county. And especially with a town of this size that's so small, it is a very excessive salary, and that's concerning to me when the rest of us who are property owners are looking at a huge tax increase of in excess of 32%. And this town board, every one of you sitting up there, are held accountable for this. There has to be something better to do. And to not have questions answered is shameful. And I do not know why you think you can sit there and not answer questions, especially about the budget, when this is the budget hearing, and you're all gonna be voting on the budget. And I still, three weeks into this, have not gotten my answers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Yes.
Nancy, respectfully, I disagree with you. Josh is technically a CEO. The supervisor of this town is a CEO, and he runs a business. He has 60 people reporting to him. We have got huge infrastructure problems going on. We have development issues happening. We need someone here full-time who can manage this. I don't want someone making a pathetic salary who's working part-time at another job or full-time at another job, and all these huge projects get pushed to the wayside and are not handled. Personally, I think the salary's a little bit low for someone who's taking on this much responsibility and taking care of this town.
Okay, next. Next.
Michelle Jodling, other question. Before you guys decide to raise taxes 32%, what measures did you take to cut things? When I don't have money to buy something, I make cuts in my budget. Or I give up on something to buy what I really want. What measures did you take before you raised somebody's tax? 32% is a phenomenal increase in taxes. I have never heard of it. And when we're thinking, I want a part-time supervisor. I don't need an $82,000 full-time supervisor.
So you think you're doing what you're supposed to do.
I didn't interrupt you.
A point of order.
I did not interrupt you. So yeah, some of us aren't okay with a part-time supervisor. Are you a full-time supervisor?
I'm here nine to five, actually sometimes nine to six, nine to seven.
The board decided that Josh Wozowski is a full-time supervisor. I didn't interrupt you.
A point of order.
I did not interrupt you. So yeah, some of us aren't okay with a part-time supervisor. Are you a full-time supervisor?
I'm here nine to five, actually sometimes nine to six, nine to seven.
The board decided that Josh Wozowski is a full-time supervisor.
It is considered a full-time position.
At the controller's office, it is not. It is not.
That's what I wanted to know. So well, let's get back to my question before my three-minute. Yeah, I know you're watching the clock. What measures did you take to reduce spending? Very basic question, that's how America operates. Anybody talk about cutting expenses?
You know what, I don't think I saw you at one budget hearing this entire cycle.
No, I had never heard of them, because they're always in special meetings.
No, they weren't, they were published, and this town board did.
So what does that matter? How does that matter?
This town board did make cuts, and we did go through the budget, and we took.
What cuts were made? Name me one.
It's in the paper.
32%? What are you guys looking at? Vote no on this budget. Think about it, think about your personal expenses.
Sir, we can hear you clearly, please lower your voice, thank you.
Okay, next. Yes.
Yeah, just a couple of comments I want to make. First of all, I think that clearly the supervisor job is not full-time, it's not part-time. It's an elected position, and you're expected to put in as much time as it takes to do the job. So I understand the concern about full-time, part-time. But you run for office, you make a commitment to the community to do the job. As far as the budget goes, I mean, I really think that you warned, you said, I think you made a statement during one of the budget sessions, that you warned last year about the surpluses getting low or not being available, and it's gonna have an impact on the budget. But I think it's a valid question to say, what did you do in 2025 to hold down, try to hold down expenses? Try to reduce some of the costs, so that the tax increase wouldn't be 32% or 35%? Okay, so if you look at it, I don't think much of an effort has been done. It's really been spending. Yes, there's infrastructure projects that have been done. You can rebuild the whole town if you wanted to. But it's a matter of how much can the taxpayers absorb? How much can the taxpayers pay? There are limits to what they can do. If you look at the spending in the town, in 2022, the budget was, with our county fire district, was about $12.5 million. Now it's up to about $17.5 million. A $5 million increase in just four short years. And now, you said you're going through the surpluses. I think a statement was made that 2026 is bad, but because there's no surplus in all, 2027 could be as bad or worse. So I think you ought to really look at how the money's being spent, where it's being spent, and give more consideration to the taxpayers on what really they can afford. One question I do have, and this is not a criticism, this is just an informational thing. On the lighting districts, I know we had a contract and replaced all the lights, all equipment from Central Hudson, had all the LED lights replaced and all. But I'm just curious, in the budget, I'm just wondering, did you borrow the money to do that? Or did you take financing out, I think the company offered it at the time, Josh? Do you recall?
It was, it's borrowed money, yes.
Okay. Well, the reason I'm asking is, and maybe it's somewhere in the budget, but I mean, I see small amounts of lighting districts have gone down considerably because you're basically paying Central Hudson for whatever the costs are. I'm just wondering, where in the budget is the repayment of the money that was borrowed? Because it was over $300,000, if I'm not mistaken, to buy all the lights and all from Central Hudson and then continue the replacement of the lights with the LEDs? I'm just curious, where, you know, where the payback is started on that money for the lighting? And the lighting program too, we're gonna save money in the long run. But I'm just curious, where the payback money is on? I don't see it in the budget. It may be in here, but I don't see it.
It's on the general fund, the general fund. It's in there, debt service?
Is it in the debt service under the general fund?
Yes.
Well, but the lighting districts are districts. So why wouldn't the district be paying for that? The residents who are in the district should be paying for that.
Dick, this is a vice of the auto firm and bond council, so that's how we did it. So that's, I got you.
I think we really have to look at that, because basically, to put it in general, that means even the village residents are paying for that $300,000 plus for the lighting program in the town. And I only raised that at curiosity, because I didn't see the number in there. But that's a district expense, and that should be reflected in part of the budget, that is, for the two lighting districts, or if it was for the district.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. Motion to close the public hearing.
Sure, move. Second. Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, moving into the preliminary budget. So, you know, we've, at this point, the way this works is, you know, I'm gonna ask the board to adopt the FY 2026 preliminary budget when we get to the special meeting later. You know, we do have to get this to the county by November 20th. So, you know, unless there's going to be any, you know, changes to anything, you know, essentially, the preliminary budget will become the final budget after we approve it tonight.
May I ask a quick question? This document that you gave me, does the public see this, or is it just for the board members?
It's just for you guys.
Okay.
As a courtesy, actually.
Okay, no, I'm just, because there's a change, and I just, okay.
But we did the change at the last budget workshop.
We did the change at the budget meeting.
That's just updating you guys, if you didn't read.
Okay, thank you. No, I just, for clarification.
I did it as a courtesy for you guys.
Well, thank you for your courtesy.
Yeah, everything that was approved at the last, you know, the last meeting, you know, that we discussed in the budget hearings is on here. So that's all been fully put out there.
I understand.
Okay, so, moving on, we have the receivers undertaking. So this is just something we have to do every year before the receiver of taxes, you know, starts collecting funds from taxpayers. So we'll, we're gonna adopt this later in the special meeting. Next, we have the Village of COH request for real property tax exemption for the water, for the water system. You know, they ask every year, historically, we've not, you know, done this. I don't expect that to change unless the board, the board, has decided to go in a different direction. Let's see, so. Next, we have extend the RFP deadline for the New York Ford grants. So actually, last week, we had a, the village and I, Mayor Kane and myself, we had a meeting with our project manager at Department of State, who is like the lead project manager for the New York Ford grants. And they are asking us to basically, I guess, just given the complexity of like the MWBE requirements and the need to really do a very thorough job of documenting the outreach, they have said that we should probably just extend it a few more weeks, so we can make sure that we're as thorough as possible in the outreach. So this way, we don't have any problems on the back end of getting reimbursed for all of the expenditures. So there is, so, you know, in talking to the village, they want us, you know, we're gonna extend the RFP deadlines that are currently out there for the Riverlight Park Improvement, the downtown Cornwall Streetscapes, that's a connector trail, and the marketing, branding, and wayfinding. We're just gonna extend it, and then we're gonna do a little bit more outreach to firms.
To what thing?
Well, we were gonna go to December, let me just see here. So right now, they're due on November 17th. We were gonna push it to basically, let me just see here. So probably another month, we were gonna push it. So we're gonna go to Wednesday, December 17th.
We haven't spent any of that money, correct? I know, I know we bonded, we haven't spent any of it yet, correct?
No, it's been bonded, and it's, no, we have not spent.
Okay, so there's, okay, I'm not sure.
Yes, no, we have not. Actually, no, I'm sorry, maybe not the 17th, because that's a Wednesday. So you know what, why don't we do Friday the 19th? Let's just make it a Friday, that's probably better to do it that way.
Friday the 19th?
Yeah.
At 7:00 p.m.?
Midnight.
Okay.
Right?
No, I mean, I didn't know whether it was morning or night.
Yeah.
That's what, thank you.
Yeah, so.
It's just a calendar.
Yeah, so we'll be doing this later in the special meeting. Let's see, next, we have, we're gonna extend the RFP deadline for the town attorney and special counsel. This we're not gonna do, I mean, we just really want a couple more weeks on this. So right now, this is due back on November 17th. So I would say that we bring it to, I don't have time on this. Like Friday the 5th, I mean, yeah, that's, I don't want to have it be too much time, because it really is a very important thing that has to be.
December 5th?
Yeah.
What time?
7:00 p.m.?
Yeah, Friday, December 5th. 7:00.
7:00 p.m.
Yeah. Yeah, just, just to give it a little bit of extra time on that, so we get as many. And we've already received one proposal, but we want, obviously, have more than one to compare it to. So, okay, so that is the town attorney. Next, we have the Hasbrook area Avenue drainage project. So this is going to be a change order for the project. And this is basically, you can see what this is up here. This is basically going to be some of the work that we're currently doing on Hasbrook. So this is gonna be, we, and I think I've, you know, I mean, Tim knows about this, but like essentially, we're, because we had some delays, and we got off to a little bit later of start, we're basically pushing Phase 3 of the project to start up again in April. And so, but we have to finish out Hasbrook first. And so essentially, the curbs, the sidewalks, and the paving, we have to do this to get the road ready in time for winter. And so this is basically tied to that. So this, this is what this change order is gonna be.
So 1.55.
Yeah, you can see the increase.
789.
Yeah, so this is, this is increasing this by this.
So the 91 increase, 389, 81?
Yeah, and so, and so just so everyone's clear, the way this had worked originally is that we were going to, the construction and the repaving were going to be separate contracts. But because we're not fully into restoration yet, what we're doing here is really just tied to like the preparing everything and getting ready for winter. We're not actually, we're gonna have to come back to this next year, and this may have to be a separate situation for the remainder of the, but we already, we always knew this when we did this, because when we awarded this, we only awarded the construction, we did not award the paving. So, yep, so this, this is what that change order is about. Next, we have the Hasbrook Avenue Drainage Project payment application number eight. So this, this is the change order, and then this is the payout. So this is going to be the eighth payout to Arginio Brothers approving this. That'll be on there later too. And I believe this is the last payout that, actually, I'll take that back. We're gonna have one more payout that'll be the work that they're doing right now.
I thought this was it?
I don't, I don't think so, because they haven't completed it yet.
Right, so the, okay, so that balance to finish it is $2 million?
Yes, $2.866 million, yes. Yeah, and, and you know, just to let the board know too, we've actually been, one bright spot in all this, I wasn't sure if we were gonna be able to actually get the process, you know, any of our grant reimbursements through the EPA payout. Thankfully, it's been processing. We got it in before, I guess, they laid even more employees, or furloughed. So we were able to get, what, approximately, like close to a million, Pam? Yeah. Yeah, so that was, that was good. I was concerned we weren't gonna be able to get that, but. Okay, so next, we have the Firth Cliff Sewer District Pump Station easement recommendations. So, as you know, we're doing the Firth Cliff Sewer District INI, and we're replacing the BD Terrace Pump Station. There's a property, and I don't know, Tim, maybe you or Virginia, you can help with this. Basically, there is a, if you pull up this, this SBL, we basically, they need us to basically go and talk to the property owner, and it's like just a, like, so you know it's on, it's on the.
On Mill Street, on Mill Street, you're going down the, were the areas?
No, this isn't gonna be on Mill Street, this is gonna be in the, so the same property that the current pump station's on, there's like an SBL.
Okay.
So like kind of, I guess, like it's like kind of going up around the corner a little bit on Willow, there's what, like an apartment building there, a multifamily? So we need to go to them and talk to them and see if they'll give us an easement to relocate the new pump station on part of their property.
So we gotta find the property owner and talk to them.
Yeah, so that's, that's, we've been, and it's not just like Joe Schmo, it's like some corporation, and we have to, yeah, so anyway. So if anyone knows that property owner, you know, if not, we'll find them, and we'll go talk to them. But that's where the engineers want to sign it, is right there.
Okay.
So that's, and they cannot, you know, we can't really go out to bid on the, you know, on the pump station piece. We're probably gonna end up doing the INIs in separate bids from the pump station, but we don't want them to like be that far apart in the timing. So we need to try to get that easement soon. Next, we have the Riverlight Park Improvement Project Recommendation of Award Hazardous Materials Testing. So this is, because of the age of the ice house and the little wee toilet rooms, the engineer says that we need to basically do testing for this. And so they have provided, and we don't have to do this this week, this isn't a rush, but they've gotten the different quotes for the testing that we have to do. This will come out of the Riverlight Park Project Capital Line.
Why are we doing this? Is this outdoors?
Because the engineers say that the ice house and the bathrooms are of an age that there could be these materials present. And because of being paid with government funding, they're going to ask about this.
All right, well, that, you're expounding.
To tell them that, and prove to them, yeah. This we can do at the next meeting, it's on the job. The 10th, matrix phone system upgrades. So we're gonna have to upgrade these systems. I mean, how old are these phones now? Like really old, right? And so basically, there's no longer, there's no longer support, there's no longer, so basically, in order for us to continue having support in what we need from the contractor, the company, we basically need to upgrade to a newer version. And that, that's all the phones that are.
All town, everything?
All the phones.
Oh, okay.
All the phones, yes. So something we're gonna have to take on.
Wait a minute, not including the.
Yeah, well, yeah, sorry.
Okay, I'm just, like, what are we, what are we talking about? Just this building, not Munger?
Town Hall.
Nothing with Munger?
Town Hall.
Okay.
No, at least just Town Hall. Yeah, I mean, look, yeah, I mean, look, like, the quotes based on whatever is like, you know, obsolete.
I'm just trying to understand if it's everything, because you don't want to go back and do it again.
No, whatever's obsolete, they've identified it.
Okay.
That's it, I don't have any other items after the final agenda publication. So, all right, public comment before we move to the special meeting. No?
What was that? I'm sorry.
I said, public comment before we move to the special meeting.
Josh?
Yeah.
Just a suggestion to the board that if you are going to have a three-minute time limit, it might be a good idea to publicize that within your agenda, a statement of how you'd like that to be. We did that when I was president of the school board, and that was very, very effective. And I believe they still have that statement on there. And it's just a good polite notification to the public, and it makes people aware, instead of people standing up to speak, and then all of a sudden, they're being told that they're timed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The legislature actually does that.
Josh, just a follow-up on the lighting district. You mentioned that the auditor told you that it should be a general charge. Could you give us something, or make something available in writing for the auditor indicating that that contract for the lighting, $300,000, is a general charge as opposed to district charge for Cornwall Lighting and Worthmouth Lighting?
I mean, I'll consult with our bookkeeper and with our consultants.
Yeah, because I think the wrong group of taxpayers are being charged for some of that, and they shouldn't be.
Sure, I got you.
The last thing I want to ask is, I know in one budget meeting, you put an additional $3,000 in the supervisor's salary line, anticipating that your salary would increase, I guess, in addition to the 5.5% for the employees, another $3,000, which isn't reflected in the budget document. Just the question is, do you plan on trying to increase your salary beyond the 5.5%?
I can, well, I think it's very clear that, what was it? The Article 8 salaries cannot be changed after this hearing and after they were published. So that is not something, the salaries cannot be increased. That's very clear.
Electoral official salaries?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, I have just one thing to clarify.
Yep.
I have a comment. Michelle Jodling, this is an appeal to residents of Cornwall and Cornwall and Hudson. Please attend these meetings. This is where your money is spent. You can watch these proceedings in person to see what goes on, who's spending your money, and how is it being spent. So please make an effort to attend these meetings.
Okay, thank you. All right, so moving on to the special meeting, all right. So I have a resolution to adopt the FY 2026 preliminary budget, whereas the Town of Cornwall preliminary budget for FY 2026 has been duly prepared by the town board, and whereas, following due notice, a public hearing was held upon the Town of Cornwall preliminary budget for FY 26, at which time all persons wishing to comment on the budget were heard. Now therefore be resolved as follows, that the town board does hereby adopt the preliminary budget as the budget for the Town of Cornwall for FY 2026. Can I get a motion to approve?
Sure, move. Second. Mr. McCarthy.
I just want to say one thing. It's that, I totally understand the public, hearing loud and clear, that this budget is tough. And I have to understand that there was three big large contracts that we had to deal with, PBA, CSA, and EMS, which we all are very grateful for. And it came at a time with also with inflation in the state of New York and the US, that oil inflation reached kind of high and stuff, and that all, you know, we had to bond a lot of money out there to do a lot of projects. So one of our goals in upcoming year 2026 is complete these big projects to get, you know, reverse, try to work on deficit, you know, reducing our ceiling dramatically, and, you know, and control, start controlling our taxes and our budget. Unfortunately, this budget is, is what it is, and, you know, so, I'm, you know, I'm gonna have to say yes, because it's the contracts, that, with a number of other things. So please understand, I hear you guys loud and clear. We'll go do a better job next year, I promise. Yes.
Ms. Scott.
I'm gonna make a statement as well. I've actually had a chance, because I attend the monthly meetings with the Association of Towns, and I've talked to other municipalities in their budget process, and they actually have open meetings. And what they do is, they'll have a department head come, and they'll propose what they, you know, what they want in their budget. I really do think that we, you know, I'm not.
I really do think that we is, you know, I'm not going to be on the town board next year. I, I strongly think that we should do that, because then the public knows what's going on, if there's equipment being needed, and, and things like that. And I, I do think that's important, but it comes fast and furious, and I, I do think that that's caused a lot of issues. The last thing I'm going to do is commend, like, Mayor Degliano last year. I know for a fact that he went to his department heads and said, hey, times are tough, I want you to decrease your spend, you know, your line, your budgets by five percent. I think those conversations should have been made. But again, I'm not with the day-to-day operations, but I think maybe that's something you, you know, we're tightening our belts. Well, I think you need to start telling, you know, the departments that we're going to have to tighten our belts, that, that's just the way it is. I'm voting no, nothing has changed my mind from the last meeting.
Ms. Elvin Rice?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm a yes, and I think it's important that we remember that in the last couple of years, we have voted to move forward on infrastructure projects and on correcting some of the pay disparities that have been plaguing our staff. And I've spoken about this before, I feel it's very important that the people who work for our town are able to live in our town or in the surrounding areas. I know Ms. Scott has mentioned the livable wage in Orange County and how difficult it can be to reach that. And I think it's important to know that there are many people who work for our town that don't make a livable wage, and they don't live in Cornwall, because they can't. So I think those things are very important, and I think we made great strides to show appreciation to our staff for the skilled work that they do, and really the only way an employer can, which is by paying them an appropriate wage. Those things are very expensive, you know, a police department is very expensive. Infrastructure projects are expensive. There was a time when COVID was on and in the couple of years after, where we really weren't getting a whole lot of infrastructure projects off the ground. And in recent years, Albany has incentivized certain projects. And I've said this before, if we are reliant on Albany grants to move our town forward, we have to take the opportunities when they come, and we've taken those opportunities. I think that almost everyone on this board has voted yes to almost every one of these big projects, and it's very, and this is sort of the result of it. So here we are, availing ourselves of grant money, which will come back to us, and treating our employees the way in which they should be treated, in a way that's more equitable to surrounding towns of a, of a similar size and population. So for all of those reasons, I think that the, the decisions that have been made that have led to this budget are fair and appropriate in their independent way. The cumulative effect of these decisions is, is before us in this budget as well. And I've said it before, I think last year we, we probably should have raised rates, uh, tax rates over the tax cap, so this would have been a much easier hit, but it is the reality of things. And I'm very hopeful that by twenty twenty-eight, these, this rate will roll back, because we will have effectuated all of the projects, and we will have seen a return on the grant money. I won't be here then, but I will be watching, so I'm very hopeful.
We're paying it.
But I think that it's very important that, that Cornwall play a long game, because these budgets come year to year to year, and so there's this pressure to work year to year to year. And I think it's really important to have year to year, but have a five-year plan, and have a ten-year plan, and, and think more broadly. So if your year to year is a little painful, one year or two years, but in five years, you're going to see the return on your investment, you're going to see appreciable gains in your community, you're going to see improvements, then you have to take those hard years in, in the hopes of the, the five-year plan working the way you've, you've meditated out. So in the interest of us playing a long game and not just shorting ourselves all the time, I'm a yes on this budget.
I just want to say that everything that we have spent in the past year, it was necessary, it was nothing, what's the word, cosmetic, anything from the Highway Department to Main Street Revitalization Committee, anything we have done, it has been calculated, it, it has been well thought and investigated. So my vote is yes, and thanks to Tim and Karen for voting yes, thank you.
Mr. Williams?
You know, I mean, I, I think I've said a lot about this. I guess, you know, I'm just going to take a little bit of, you know, we really need to get into, you know, get away from this like year-to-year budgeting, because what happens is this political cycle that we're in kind of dictates what I would say, really crappy budgeting and decision-making. And that's what kind of the town got caught up in for many years, is that we're always like, how do we keep taxes low? Because we're afraid we're going to lose the next election. And I'm afraid that no elected official wants to raise taxes in an election year, as is, you know, evidenced by, you know, the past couple of weeks of this campaign. I think it's a little foolish to think that any of us up here intentionally did this knowing that, but you know what? We did the responsible, the right thing, and I would do it all over again, because we settled contracts. You know, instead of, you know, employees getting zero or even negative raises, as happened in the past, because some years people got zero, one percent raises, and health insurance, you know, goes up, and they get a negative raise. Ask, ask the town employees. We put a stop to that, we're not going to balance the backs of our, you know, budget on, on the town employees. Then we're talking to the public, they're like, oh my God, I love our town employees so much, so much that we're not going to take care of them? Please. And so we took care of that. We fixed EMS, you know what? Prior to twenty twenty-two, we were relying on New Windsor's good races to respond and serve our community. And you know what New Windsor said? Enough free riding on, on us, pay your fair share. And you know what? We did the responsible thing, and now we have the best ambulance service in the Hudson Valley. And infrastructure, we didn't do anything, because we wanted to stay under the tax cap every year. So we delayed and deferred, and delayed and deferred, and now we're playing catch-up. Stuff's breaking and we're being responsible. And again, we got seven million dollars in grants to, you know, to apply to twelve million dollars in, in bonding. Never happened in Cornwall before. So as we gradually, and some of that stuff is to replace things that were destroyed by federal disasters. You know what? We don't just have twelve million dollars sitting in a bank account, we're not a large city, we're not New Windsor, we're not. And so I, I get it, but you know what? We have to be responsible, and I think we owe it to the public to be responsible and to not just play this like political budget game every year. And so we're putting an end to that, and, look, you know what? I, and actually, I'm not the highest paid supervisor in Orange County, I think that might be the town of Newburgh, what, a hundred and forty-five thousand? Or the town of New Windsor, a hundred, you know, whatever, like forty? Yeah, so I, I, I am not, actually. I am not, actually, so, but, you know, it, it is, this is a, you know, full-time job, we do a lot of work, and, you know, again, I'm going to continue day after day coming in here and working my ass off for the residents of Cornwall like I do every day, and I have for the past four years. And I'm looking forward to the year ahead here, and, you know, because I know it's going to be a, you know, a good one for Cornwall, because I think we happen to live in the best town in Orange County. And I know every resident that lives here thinks that, and we're just going to continue making it better. And, you know, the naysayers, the people that have problems, well, you know what? Yeah, please come to the meetings, have a dialogue, because, you know, that's what I'm here for. And so I'm going to vote yes on this budget. Thank you.
Okay, with all due respect, one of the things that, when you're doing all these comparisons, all these other municipalities have, blah, 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 you want to, you know, try to be equitable, we have a different pot of money. And we have our finances and our revenues, let's face it, things are going down as far as mortgage taxes and, and other things we're getting. And I'm hoping that when we look at next year in terms of spending, we start trying to live within that, because we can't continue to spend with the limited pot of money we have, we just can't, it's not sustainable. And I would love to pay our town employees the same as people in the town of Newburgh and, and Monroe and, and all that, but we don't have the same pot of money. That's, that's the fact.
Our employees are middle of the pack.
I'm just saying, we don't have the money.
Right, but we compared, we compared to commensurate communities, not Newburgh, Chester, Blimming Grove.
But they have more ratables than we do, we don't have the ratables.
Okay, all right, moving on, budgets adopted. Next, we have the receivers undertaking. Whereas under Section twenty-five of the town law, an undertaking for faithful performance is required from the town receiver of taxes and other town officials in regard to all monies or property coming into their hands. And whereas the said undertaking is sufficient as long as it is for an amount at, at least equal to the amount of money received and held by the receiver of taxes and other officers at any one time. And whereas the town heretofore procured and filed such a faithful performance undertaking on behalf of the receiver of taxes and the said town officials, and whereas the county has requested a formal resolution of the town board approving the undertaking. Now therefore be resolved as follows, that the town board hereby formally approves the said faith, faithful performance undertaking on behalf of the receiver of taxes and other town officials as required by Section twenty-five of the New York State town law. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Elvin Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Orfti?
Yes.
Mr. Wodehouse?
Yes. Next, we have a resolution extending the RFP deadline for the New York Forward Grant Projects. Whereas the, sorry, I'm just going back to grab this. Whereas the town board of the town of Cornwall has issued requests for proposals, RFPs, on the following New York Forward Grant Projects, Riverlight Park Improvement Project, Downtown Cornwall Streetscape, and Marketing Branding and Wayfinding Strategy. And whereas the due date on the responses to the RFPs were set for November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. And whereas no responses have been received to date, and the town board wishes to extend the deadline for the RFPs to allow more time for submissions. Now therefore be resolved as follows, that the town board of the town of Cornwall hereby extends the due date of the RFPs to December nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. And that the town clerk shall publish notices of the extended date for the RFPs in the town's official newspaper, post a copy of the notice on the town's website and at her office, and maintain copies of the RFPs in her office for review by interested parties. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Elvin Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Orfti?
Yes.
Mr. Wodehouse?
Yes. Okay, so next, this is the town, extending the RFP for the town attorney. Whereas the town board of the town of Cornwall has issued a request for proposals for town attorney and for special counsel on land use and development matters. And whereas the due date on responses to the RFPs were set for November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, whereas no responses have been received to date, and the town board wishes to extend the deadline for the RFPs to allow for more time for submissions. Now therefore be received as follows, that the town board of the town of Cornwall hereby extends the due dates to the RFPs to Friday, December fifth, twenty twenty-five. And that too, the town clerk shall publish notices of the extended date for the RFPs in the town's official newspaper, post a copy of the notice on the town's website and at her office, and maintain a copy of the RFPs in her office for review by interested parties. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Elvin Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Orfti?
Yes.
Mr. Wodehouse?
Yes, all right, number, Hasbrook Avenue Drainage Project Change Order number five. So as you can see here, this is why I described, this is basically the, the portion of the pavement that we have to have, you know, the current contractor, Argenio, complete in order to basically get, to close down the project for the winter. So that you see what this is costing above. And the reason why it's a change order is because they originally weren't going to be doing this, but we need to do it in order to close down the project for the winter. This is going to increase their contract by ninety-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents for these, for the, you know, for the, you know, asphalt and the, the, this, all the stuff that's listed above. Can I get a motion to approve change order number eight?
So moved. Second.
Mr. McCarty? Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Elvin Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Orfti?
Yes.
Mr. Wodehouse?
Yes. Next, I have the Hasbrook Avenue Drainage Project Payment Application number eight. Can I get a motion to approve the pay application for Argenio Brothers for the pay application number eight?
So moved.
Okay.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Elvin Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Orfti?
Yes.
Yes. Next, can I get a mo, a motion to approve warrant number eleven?
So moved. I'll stop it.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Elvin Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Orfti?
Yes.
Mr. Wodehouse?
Yes, next, hold the comments. No, okay? Yes.
One other thing regarding the budget and salaries. I, I want to publicly state that I am beyond thrilled and happy with our entire police department from the chief on down and our entire highway buildings and grounds sanitation from town on down also. We have certainly amazing employees, and the employees that work in Town Hall are also excellent. So I, I want to just point that out, that that's not at all where I would dispute the raises that were due to those folks, thank you.
Thank you. All right, if no one else, can I get a motion to go into executive session to discuss the camo pollution control contract renewal?
So moved.
Yes.
I'm going to talk about Cornhartts' request, and also, I'm going to talk about.
Oh, this is closed?
Oh, what?
The court for exemption of.
Oh, well, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
That's right next week, we decide.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll decide that next week, I mean, obviously, we know that we're not going to. Yeah.
I'm Muslim, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, it's fine, Tim, no, we'll, we'll.
Is it the timing that we need to do it now?
No.
Do it next time?
I just need a second.
Yes.
Let me close it.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so, so can I get a motion to go into executive session to discuss camo pollution control contract renewal and close session and seek confidential legal advice to counsel?
So moved.
Sorry.
Mr. McCarty? Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Elvin Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Orfti?
Yes.
Mr. Wodehouse?
Thank you, yes.